Um, so it's three minutes after the hour. We'll go ahead and start the meeting and I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Laura, second. All in favor? That's one, two, three, four, six, zero. For the first order of business, I'd like to start with the election of our Vice Chair and Secretary. Are there any nominations for the Vice Chair? I nominate Karen Hirsch for Vice Chair. Doesn't need to be any seconds, so I will go ahead and make some remarks. I'm getting some preparation, so I gotta just. So I am happy to nominate Karen Hirsch for Vice Chair to the Board of Education. Karen and I have worked together for the last four-plus years as members of this Board of Education on various committees. And I know the community has heard a wealth of information provided by my colleagues in prior statements about Karen and her experience and her background and all the things that she's done for the community. And I echo those statements. But what I can truly speak to is the working relationship that Karen and I have had over the last four and a half years on a host of committees, including the curriculum committees, the policy committees, the strategic plan committee. And I have to say that while we don't always agree and we've walked away from conversations to agree to disagree, we've opened our eyes to a host of different viewpoints and have changed each other's viewpoints because of our vigorous dialogue and our unrelenting viewpoints, but also our unrelenting agreement to remain friends. And that holds true to today. So I think that, and while the community may not know, that over the last several months, Karen and I have been working very closely together in trying to formulate a plan in moving forward with this board and moving for the advantage of Greenwich Public Schools. And I am delighted to make my recommendation for Karen to help me and help this board move forward in doing great things for Greenwich Public Schools. Any other nominations? Great, so I'd like to hold a vote. Oh, we need to write this down. So I'd ask that everybody, with respect to the voting, we're doing this in connection with Policy 9121. I'd ask that you write down who you're voting for with respect to Vice Chair and that you're voting for Vice Chair. Just for economy's sake, can I ask Wendy to just keep the tally as I write this down? Although I think we all know what it's going to be. Sophie Coven for Karen Hirsch. Karen Hirsch for Karen Hirsch. Karen Kowalski for Karen Hirsch. Laura Costin for Karen Hirsch. Kathleen Stowe for Karen Hirsch. Wendy Visser Walsh for Karen Hirsch. That's six-zero for Karen Hirsch. That would have been seven-zero for Karen Hirsch. Great, now I'd like to open up the nominations for Secretary. Karen Hirsch.
Um, I'd like to, sorry, I'm loud tonight. Um, I'd like to nominate Wendy Visser Walsh for Secretary. And I could give a whole long speech, but we've had a, not a lot of opportunity to get to know each other as well, because we've only just started working with one another. But I really enjoy it every time we've had the opportunity to speak. And I know she's eager to dip her feet in and really get the understandings of how the board functions and best way to do that is to, uh, to help out. So I really appreciate you stepping forward to wanting to volunteer and I think she's going to be a great addition, personally. I mean, I would say much more glowing things, but.
Any other nominations for Secretary? Great, so let's take a vote. Again, same protocol. I'll tally. That's fine. So just everyone write on the piece of paper. Paste the paper, remember to write for Secretary and who you're voting for. Thank you. Yeah, Cody couldn't join today. Sophie Coven for Wendy Walsh. Michael Mercanti Anthony for Wendy Walsh. Really bad handwriting. Karen Hirsch for Wendy Visser Walsh. Karen Kowalski for Wendy Visser Walsh. Wendy Visser Walsh for Wendy Visser Walsh. Laura Costin for Wendy Visser Walsh. And Kathleen Stowe for Wendy Walsh. That's seven-zero. And Mike, I'm keeping all of these ballots for you and I will turn them in to you tomorrow. All right, so now that we have that in order, congratulations to Karen for Vice Chair and congratulations to Wendy as Secretary. Although, I'm sure Karen's very happy to give you the job as Secretary, but we can comment on that later. All right, so next we have our first speakers for tonight, four Greenwich High School students, government representatives. Our Omar and Caleb here.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Omar Galal and I'm the Student Body Vice President at GHS. I would like to start off tonight by commenting on the partisanship of the board. In the past weeks, several news outlets have reported on the board as deadlocked along party lines and concerned with partisan ideals. I find these notions deeply troubling because they do not represent the mission of the BOE. Yes, the board is bipartisan, but its mission is distinctly and inherently nonpartisan. Moving forward, I'm hopeful that the board will continue to set an agenda that puts aside partisan ideals with the shared objective of furthering the success of students across the district. My next point pertains to the budget. Students were immensely disappointed last week when finding out that the recently passed operating budget would lead to the reduction of six teachers at Greenwich High School. Forget six teachers, losing just one teacher would have a cascading impact on class sizes, personalized learning, test scores, ultimately a negative impact on the success of students. We believe that the board should seriously reconsider this GHS teacher reduction in the budget. Last but not least, I would like to extend my congratulations to Mrs. Kowalski on her election as Chair. We look, we really look forward to seeing you, Ms. Hirsch, Dr. Jones, and anyone else from the board attend our monthly student government lunch meetings. That's all I have from GHS tonight. Thank you and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thanks, Omar. All right, Caleb, you're up.
Good evening, Chair Kowalski and members of the board. I'm Caleb Kalin, the Student Body President at Greenwich High School. This new year has brought some new goals, considerations, and initiatives to student government. I am here tonight to update you on the latest within student government and our plan following midterm exams. Over the next few weeks, Omar and I have been working on connecting with subcommittee chairs to ensure that progress is made toward their individual goals. Each subcommittee is aiming to develop at least one solid proposal based on their specific areas. Some of those subcommittees, such as the Communications Subcommittee, are already working on this and are now collaborating with administrators to bring the proposal to fruition, which we hope to soon share with this board. At the last board meeting, I spoke about Diversity Awareness Club and their plans for a new Diversity Day at GHS. Progress is continuing to be made, including a discussion at their latest meeting about potential dates and times, as well as the process for reaching out to students and teacher facilitators. Within the Diversity Day, they also considered which potential affinity groups could be held and how to go about establishing them. They finished by brainstorming ideas for discussion questions in breakout groups. I'm excited to see this event come together to ensure that GHS is recognizing and celebrating its diverse student body. As GHS, GHS students have commenced their midterm exams, we see the hard work that they are putting in to succeed. From studying at the Greenwich Library to extra help sessions with teachers, students are maximizing the opportunities that are available to them. Considering that the midterm policy has returned to its pre-COVID standards of 10% and 20% waiting for a full year or semester class respectively, student government seeks to collect data following exams in order to gauge how this change affected students and teachers. We are hoping that by surveying the school community, we can find out what has worked well in the past and what needs to be improved for the future. Student government is looking forward to starting a school-wide conversation about midterm and final exams in order to develop a proposal for the next school year. With that, I will conclude my updates on student government and current events at GHS. I'm excited to speak with you all again next month. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thanks, Caleb. Comments from GEA, Lil?
You keep changing the podium. First it's there, then it's there, and then you ruined my opening, uh, mic. It was ladies' night. There was all ladies here tonight, and then now you ruin the whole thing. Oh, sorry, John, but you're over there. It's like a junior high dance. Women are over here. Oh, there's some guys. Yep, there, okay, there you go. All right, let's get down to business. Huh? Oh, okay, okay. All right, well, good evening, Dr. Jones, I know is listening, Board of Ed members, GEA, students, parents, Greenwich community. Well, the drama's over. We have a new chair. Welcome, Chairwoman Kowalski. Now let's pick up our bootstraps, because we have a lot of work to do here. We can't have what happened, what I observed and the community observed, the Board of Ed members last week being asked to vote and make decisions that impact our students without having timely information and accurate information to make the best decisions. I have confidence that we are on the right track after seeing everyone tonight and hearing comments that we are on a good step forward. We need to have the best information for the decision-makers in our district and our community that goes for not only the Board of Ed, but the BET and RTM. I'm optimistic that the BET will pass the superintendent's budget. You know why? The will of the people. Let's talk about the will of the people. We got the ban on the leaf blowers. Look at what they can do for leaf blowers? Let's see what we can do for our students and education. Now let's talk about the will of the teachers and the will of the parents. Last meetings, you heard myself, parents and teachers talk about ALP, FLS, and PE. Let's add a few more onto this list. Let's talk about preschool. We need to maintain the six-to-nine ratio. Have you ever been in a preschool class and observed? I have. You have a teacher, two parents, and students, all with, all with special needs, our youngest and most demanding learners. Who has assistive technology? Who has a walker, wheelchair? Who has to go to the bathroom? Who runs away? Who's teaching the rest of the class? I could give at least 50 scenarios. We need to do the best for our youngest learners. I don't care what other districts are doing. We have to set the example. We want the best for our students. We need to strive for that. As far as the high school, I hear six, I hear four, I'm not sure. It's hard for me to speak about the cuts, because I really don't know where the cuts are, what programs, what teachers. But this I do know, as a student body has spoken their will, it would be impactful and devastating to our students. What I do know is this, a high school teacher not talking about specials in their eight-day cycle carries a maximum 125 student load, times four is 500 students. If it's six, that's 750 students. Where are those students going to be scheduled? Who's going to pick up those extra classes? How is it gonna, are the classes going to be larger? Will the students not get their classes? Because there's less classes to be offered with less staff. Are they going to get the classes they want? Their electives they want, the specials they want? I don't know. When I find out where the cuts are, then I can give you more details, but I can just deal with the numbers and data now. Let's talk about the will of the teachers. This is what I'm hearing. Enough's enough. We built an unfunded mandate with our special ed program, something we needed to do, something we're building that's good. But where does that money come? The seven staff members that were paid by SRE and ARP are now implemented into our budget, which means there's less for the other departments. We can't build on the backs of other teachers. They are coming to me constantly with not enough support, not enough supplies, not time for training, if they do have a free block, but really they're, if you're in the classroom and you have a free block, it's not a free block. One class leaves, you're putting down what objectives recovered, what's, what, where do we end off? Getting ready for the next class to come in. If you have different grade level, levels, there's different setups. Now you take that period away to go cover a class, to go pick up something else, to cover for a sub, to do another corollary, because people think it's a free time. It's like going to a restaurant and having dinner, and Mike comes along, "Don't have time to clean the table, sit down, you have the next meal." Karen, "Oh, don't have time, you come in pretty soon." You have a mess. There's a mess there. And that's what happens in the classroom. Transition times are so important for teachers. Now I know I'm being timed and have a time limit, but you are going to hear, we have BET meetings come up, I'm sure that you're going to hear loud and clear the will of the teachers and the will of the parents, and I bet you it's going to be louder than any leaf blower you ever hear in us town.
Thank you, Lil. John, you're up for the PTA Council comments. And I'm always anxious to see what props you've brought with you.
Chair Kowalski, BOE members, Superintendent Jones, wherever you may be, everyone here, everyone who's listening, I'm fond of saying, I am John Fisher, the president of the PTA, Greenwich PTA Council, and the parents of two of the 8,611 great kids in the Greenwich Public School system. We note that there's a light agenda tonight, and it has the feeling of being the calm before the storm. The budget is still the elephant in the room. You could just about hear a collective momentary sigh of relief when the BOE approved the operating budget at the January 4 special meeting, including funding for the status quo for language instruction at Julian Curtis, preserving their magnet theme, including ALP, including elementary school PE. Board members and the administration raised interesting considerations about how ALP and PE are structured, and those interesting points are worth in-depth discussion, and it's good that there is now, hopefully, space to have those discussions and not use budget as a blunt instrument to whack ALP and PE and magnet school themes as if they were a pinata. I said momentary, and I said hopefully, because we all know that this well-considered, thoroughly debated, approved, proposed budget now needs to survive the BET process. PTAK and dozens, if maybe not hundreds, of PTA families plan to be actively engaged with that process. We'll be there backing up the BOE, the BOE Chair, and the administration, as you all faithfully advocate for this budget, which is the minimum of what the schools need. But that's not all. Let's revisit that momentary sigh of relief that I mentioned. I can honestly say that there is an underlying outrage with the parts of the budget that increase the pre-K enrollment ratios and decrease the instructional staff at the high school, as you heard from the students and as I believe you're going to hear from others. No one's happy about the pre-K enrollment ratios, not the teachers, as we heard from Lil, not the parents of the special ed kids, and not the parents of the general ed kids. And no one's happy about decreasing the instructional staff at the high school by six, not the students, as we heard, not the parents, not the teachers, and not the administrators. There's that old canard that's popular with people in and around political environments that you know you've got a good compromise when no one's happy about it. But let's talk about that canard. As most people will know, in French, canard is a duck. This is not a duck. In English, a canard is a falsehood, like this guy pretending to be a duck. Don't think those budget concessions are good compromises. That would be a falsehood, like this guy. Those choices will not maintain, and they certainly will not improve, the quality of education in Greenwich. When the BOE and the administration gets the approved budget back from the BET, we know you will be revisiting budget choices. The pre-K ratios should not be changed, but if they are going to increase, then the special ed teachers and the staff in the classroom will have to increase as well. Only about eight years ago, when my kids were in the pre-K program, when my, one of my kids was in the pre-K program, the pre-K ratio was about 30% special ed kids. Then it was 40%. Now the proposal is 50%. I'm not aware that the staffing has changed. Higher ratios will require more professional staff in the classrooms. And the instructional staff at GHS, no one expects habitually under-enrolled classes to be carried, but everyone expects that GHS will have all the instructional staff needed to keep high-quality education for all 2,673 students, students with a huge range of academic achievement and college and career goals. No one can reasonably believe that reducing GHS instructional staff by 5.6 FTEs in this current year and six more in the coming year is any way to deliver quality education and address the access and equity issues that are present, because we have a very diverse student population in a very large high school. Thank you for this time. Thank you for your considerations. Thank you for your service to the community, and we'll be seeing you at the BET meetings.
Thanks, John. So now we have our community comments. We have seven on the agenda tonight.
Up first, we have Julia McCann, followed by Marcel Schwarberg.
Sorry. My name is Julia McCann. My son Peter is a non-verbal three-year-old in the pre-K program with an IEP. I grew up in Greenwich. I was born here, raised here, and I moved here back with my family last year. Sorry, I pulled together. Growing up, the pre-K program was championed for being inclusive and beneficial for children with special needs. In more recent years, the program has moved away from its ethos and core principles of its founding program. The new proposed ratio change of 50/50 IEP Gen Ed children with no additional staff increase is detrimental to the growth and development of our children, as well as puts increasing in unrealistic demands on our teachers. It is imperative that we increase our staffing with the new ratio change so that teachers are able to provide the services that are mandated. With the current 40/60 ratio, teachers are already stretched thin and going above and beyond their job requirements to provide all children with the attention they need and deserve daily. Teachers are routinely skipping lunch breaks and bathroom breaks because there's not enough support in the classrooms as is. What is actually needed is an increase of classrooms and a staff based on the current ratio. Dr. Jones and Dr. H, I strongly encourage you to go and visit the pre-K classrooms so you can have a realistic picture and understanding of what is actually happening in the current classrooms with a 40/60 ratio. An important note, statistics on meaningful inclusion for special needs children show that best outcomes happen when class proportions are similar to natural proportions of the community, and that when proportions are higher for children with disabilities, outcomes are more similar, not much different, if at all poorer, to completely segregated classrooms. In addition, it's been shown that once segregation happens early, it's much harder for children to get off the segregated path. The BOE has not currently provided a logical rationale for why this decision was made and/or how they are planning to implement these changes. Without a logical rationale, we must assume the budget was the only consideration versus the quality of our pre-K education at the detriment of our children. What data was utilized to make this decision? Were teachers and administrators who are part of the preschool program consulted and a part of this decision? Since 2017, we are trending in the wrong direction. In the past seven years, the program has gone from a class composition of four IEP children, 11 Gen Ed peers, to six to nine, and now eight to nine. Furthermore, the increase in the ratio has seen no additional staff increase with the same amount of teachers in the classroom. We must increase the staffing of the teachers with this proposed ratio change. Once this new ratio change goes into effect, where do we go from here? And to the BOE who voted in favor of this ratio change, I do not understand how you can vote on something without a full understanding, explanation, and presentation, and how these changes would impact our most vulnerable children. You have done our children a great disservice.
Thank you.
If these were your children, you would not have voted this way. Thank you.
Am I good? I don't know when to start. Hi, Board members. I'm the parent of two children that are currently in the GPS pre-K program, and I'm asking you to reconsider the vote change in the pre-K class ratio. When we were moving from Manhattan to Connecticut, we chose Greenwich because of its strong school system. The, the pre-K program has a strong reputation in the community. I heard about great teachers, excellent curriculum, and well-prepared children going into elementary school. Kara and Anna, both no longer with the preschool team, explained the program's background and the inclusionary classroom model. As you know, Greenwich is federally mandated to, excuse me, to provide special education services. As you know, Greenwich is federally mandated to, excuse me, to provide special education services for children under five. The classrooms need to represent the general education environment. The ratio of children with IEPs to typical peers has increased over the years. In 2016, classes had a composition of four special needs to 11 typically developing students with one teacher with 2.5 paras. The ratio has increased in 2017 to the six-to-nine ratio with the same number of teachers. The December vote increased the class size to 17 with an updated ratio of eight to nine with no additional adults in the room. The higher ratio, increased class size, and no additional teachers require, will reduce time spent per student. The current six-to-nine ratio is extraordinarily demanding in itself. Teachers are required to both manage the day and document all of the data. We have dedicated teachers who do their best to meet the demands of these rooms. They deserve to be able to eat lunch and take the necessary breaks throughout the day to best care for our children. I'm concerned that this change will decrease the academic rigor in the classroom. The amount of time spent on general education study will be reduced, and our children will have less opportunity to have quality instruction to meet their diverse learning needs. I'm also worried about safety in the classroom. These are little kids who need constant monitoring, and I'm curious to know the plan for how physical and safety needs can be met with this increased classroom size. I randomly decided to tune into the December meeting, and that was the first time I heard about this pre-K ratio decision when it was voted. So the question was asked if we were made aware, and the answer was no. The lack of transparency in all of this has been disappointing, and I understand that these meetings are public, but I would expect changes that directly impact our children's classrooms to be shared more specifically. I'll leave you with one very quick story. My little three-year-old said to me the other night, "Mom, I need to tell you my affirmations."
What? Thirty seconds.
She continued to say, "I'm strong, brave, proud, I'm confident, I am smart, I am loved." This is something that she's learned in her very short time in the pre-K program and something we can all learn from. I want the community to be proud of the program and its reputation, our teachers to feel confident that they can meet the needs of the kids in their classroom. We want our parents to be informed of the changes that impact our children's education, and our children to feel loved and set up for success in the future. Thanks for your time.
John, thank you. Up next, Vilma Yanez Archila, followed by Beth Forger. Vilma Yanez Archila?
Hi, my name is Vilma. It has come to my attention that my daughter's education and therapy will be affected by the recent BOE budget cuts and the decisions proposed, which will also directly impact the general education students. Students with IEPs and entire preschool program. And this is very upsetting, as we personally made a huge life decision to stay in Greenwich area because of how great things were going for my daughter and her current preschool classroom. To think that not only she will be affected by all these changes, but all her classmates as well is extremely disheartening. Adult decisions should be thought through carefully because these are future citizens of this town. I thought this was the best area for my children's education, and it was honestly looking that way for my daughter in particular, including when it came to her IEP and special ed placement. However, now with these new budget cuts, she will be getting less services and support as the teachers involved will be providing more support and services to more students, leaving them with less individual time for each student. The teachers are doing the best they can, and to add more students to the classroom without providing the addition, I hope that the students should be receiving is very unfair. The teachers could only stretch themselves so far for them to go to work to provide education to our children under these new proposed circumstances. It is a true testament for their level of dedication. They should not be overwhelmed with higher caseloads and workloads to then receive less support or resources that the district should be providing. My last comment is that the, that Hamilton Avenue School has actually been without a full-time speech and language pathologist almost all school year. My daughter's speech mandate has not been fulfilled and has not, has had several missed sessions that need to be made up. It is the responsibility of the district to make sure that the positions are filled, and the parents are notified with all the details, which I was notified very late. And I haven't had any words since September of 2023. Nothing at all. With all these changes and all the negative impacts that they will bring, we need to find common ground to create better solutions that will benefit our children and their future. Education starts from the moment they are in preschool. Let's show the other districts that we are the best for our families. I want to say I honestly, it was a big, hard decision to stay here.
Give me seconds.
And if I could, I can't actually change things now, but I've had experience of other parents that were in Greenwich before, and they actually moved to Stanford because Stanford District are giving them what the teachers, what they deserve and what they should be doing. Like, how is it another town across, not that far away from us, are able to do this? If they're able to do this, then we should be able to do this. We're Greenwich. This is why I moved to this area. I've heard so many good things about here, but I don't know.
I wish I knew I could bring props. I would have thought about that, thought that through a little more. Word of end members, Dr. Jones, families, colleagues, both here and listening at home. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Beth Forger, and I'm a 35-year veteran teacher in the Greenwich Public Schools where my commitment has been to the preschool, ensuring that our youngest learners are provided with an outstanding early childhood education. I'm here to illustrate why it would greatly, why it would greatly benefit our students to maintain the six-to-nine ratio of special education students to general education students rather than moving toward a 50-50 ratio, which would impact the huge responsibility we have to teach the foundational skills that all children need to be successful learners. I want to start by giving you a visual of what occurs in a three-minute period in, in one of our preschool classes with the current ratio. Imagine this. The lights have been turned off by the student who has the job of class electrician, very important job. The teacher sings "The lights are off, eyes on me" as he or she gives directions to the class. It's now time to clean up and transition to the morning meeting, where the students will greet their friends, discuss the question of the day, and have their first group lesson according to one of our three curricular components. In order to do that, three children need a visual schedule to make that transition successfully. One child needs to use the bathroom. One child is crying because they had a rough morning and they missed their mom. Two students need assistance washing the paint off their hands. One student is using an augmentative communication device to tell us which friend they want to sit with during morning meeting. Visuals of expected behaviors are needed for the little guy struggling to follow the routine. One student needs physical assistance to use his walker to join the group. Data is taken for the child that has an IEP goal to follow the group directions. That's only three minutes, and the formal lessons for the day haven't even begun, and they require more steps, more supports, and more accommodations. A duly certified preschool teacher's responsibilities include, but are not limited to, implementing the creative curriculum, the foundations literacy curriculum, the second step social-emotional curriculum, planning and progress monitoring for all students using the Connecticut Early Learning Standards and the DOTS, developing and monitoring IEPs, overseeing data collection on goals and objectives, supporting families, conducting educational evaluations, supervising professional assistants, and overall daily insight or oversight of an instruction. My point sharing all of this with you, staff can only be stretched so thin. Students deserve the best from us and the opportunity to develop in a supportive nurturing environment. While I understand that many surrounding communities may adhere to a 50-50 ratio, they would strive to improve their ratios if they understood the following. According to the National Association for the Education of Young Children, the principle of natural proportion should guide the design of inclusive early childhood programs. The principle of natural proportions means the inclusion of children with disabilities in proportion to the population. There is also, this is also supported by Dr. Phil Strain, an expert in the field of inclusive practices that Greenwich partnered with to develop our program.
I think you can send your comments. Thank you. Next up, Katerina Mora, followed by Katie Yu.
Okay. Good evening, good evening members of the board and Chair Dr. Jones, online and all meeting attendees. My name is Katerina Mora. I'm the mother of two kids at Greenwich Public Schools, one of which is in the preschool program. I'm here to join my voice to the loud chorus of people, parents and teachers that are shocked at the information that the ratio would change for the preschool program. You have heard from experts already. We have told you how one of these classrooms run, how thin the teachers are to manage everything, and how lucky we have been to have this program in this town. I do understand that districts surrounding us have a different ratio, and my question is, why do we have to follow them and lower the bar rather than setting the example and leading the way? If we have means, and if we can, and if you think of the kids and of the staff and of the teachers as human beings and/or their needs, and not just as numbers or budget, you would see this would be a wonderful example to reverse this vote. I think you all are trying to do your best. We're very grateful for the time you put in here. It would be very courageous, very brave of you to do whatever you can to at least hold an information meeting, to hear experts, to hear the teachers, to hear the parents, to make this information available. I know we don't have much time, and I could tell you many stories why my kid, who was a neurotypical kid who came through the lottery, is so blessed from bringing this program. When we moved here in December to 2021, we checked all schools possible for our kid, and the only school or program we didn't know anything about and we could not visit was the Greenwich Public Schools preg- program. However, we've heard such raving and wonderful comments from teachers, from the community, that we went ahead, no hesitation, we applied for the lottery, and when she got in, we were very happy. This has had actually negative impacts in my life and my professional life because of the short schedule, but I could not be happier for her. And I have to tell you, I could tell how she, being still a general education kid, she only knew three words in English when she started the program. And now she blooms, she is spunky, she bosses around, and she has this privilege of not only contacting with general education kids, but also special education kids and a wide range of neurodiverse and neurotypical, and this is a privilege. It has also been a privilege to me to spend a lot of time in that classroom last year. And I tell, sure, I tell you, it is a wonderful program, but it's going to be detrimental to everyone to change this ratio. I will only tell you that my daughter, these days, she's always happy, she loves her teachers. And yesterday, when the school started late, I told her it's going to be start late. She said, "Oh, no, after one day, I'm home now late." And she's just four years old. So please do your best to keep the quality of this program because we all need. Thank you.
Next up, Katie Yu, followed by Rory Cunin.
There, good evening. I'm speaking tonight to address the uptick in bullying, teasing, and actual physical violence in our three middle schools. This appears to particularly affect unstructured free time, such as recess. While there certainly should be consequences for students who exhibit bullying or bad behavior, I don't follow the logic in decisions such as canceled recess for an entire grade or silent lunches. In fact, I feel this is counterproductive as it results in pent-up energy and students who did not participate in the incident feeling powerless. Might some students even feel compelled to police other students for fear of losing their earned recess? It obviously benefits everyone to have a positive school environment. However, are we addressing this situation in a proactive way or simply responding when behaviors occur? What sort of consultation is occurring with our BCBA team? In addition to data, what action steps have been taken from our many years of surveys to determine strategies for addressing students' mental needs and sense of community engagement? It seems that we keep on talking about mental health, but our social workers are overburdened. Is this perhaps a topic that can be addressed at the next Professional Learning Day in March? Perhaps a discussion about strategies during recess? What best practices are in place in other districts that might have resulted in positive outcomes? What type of incentive programs can we encourage students to use to use to make the right decisions? I apologize if this sounds cynical, but I think it's unrealistic to expect that all middle school students, many of whom are maturing and impulsive, to just be kind because they were asked to do so. As a district, there should be consistency and protocol related to recess time and the need to get outside and decompress. Silent lunches and seated indoor recess will likely backfire. In one middle school, the classes are scheduled so tightly that students need to choose between eating and going outside for their 20 minutes of recess. Additionally, what consideration is being given to our most vulnerable special ed students? Many of them have legally mandated movement breaks written into their IEPs. It appears that many parents are unaware of some of these issues. I feel that parents should be kept more in the loop so that they can work as partners to help encourage positive productive behavior. Middle schoolers are a few years away from high school, and to the extent that there is a problem, this needs to be addressed now before these students enter the high school and have not learned proper strategies for their behaviors. I am not raising this issue to simply complain, nor do I not acknowledge the hard work that our teachers and admin do every day. I recognize that this is a difficult situation, and I hope that we can work together to address this and get ahead of this urgent issue. Thank you.
Next up, Rory Cunin.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rory Cunin. While my wife Caroline's family has been a part of the Greenwich community for over four generations, we moved back into town with our family about four years ago. Our son Liam is a four-year-old in the pre-K program with an IEP. Julia, Marcel, and others have spoken to the obvious detriment that the new preschool ratio change poses to our children. I'd like to address the effect this change has on our incredible teachers. My son Liam thrives in an integrated classroom setting because his general education classmates and teachers motivate him and fuel his cognitive development. He really needs one-on-one support, but we were told a couple of years ago that this was not possible under the school's current budget. The teachers and staff were already spread too thin. And these teachers are amazing. The caliber of education Liam has gotten from the GPS teachers is much better than any private school program we're aware of. They meet every morning with, they meet him every morning with joy and enthusiasm. They encourage and facilitate interaction with all his classmates, and they work hard with him in therapy to help him achieve his goals. All of this is accomplished in an understaffed system with strained resources. Our fear is the very real, is the very real possibility that our teachers, under further strain, will burn out, leaving them unable to provide the same standard of education or force them to find work elsewhere. My question for you all is this. Is there a staffing solution associated with the new ratio change? An increase in the IEP to general education student ratio without a commensurate increase in staffing resources is unfair to the teachers and harmful to all of our children, general education and IEP alike. There is a sad state of affairs in a town like Greenwich when misguided budget priorities place early childhood education on the chopping block. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comment for this evening. I know that Dr. Jones is online this evening. I think I see her. Yep, I see her. Thanks. She's suffering from a bit of a cold, so she's sparing us all while she is comfortably sitting at home. But we have the superintendent report. So Dr. Jones, would you like to give your, your report?
Sure. I have a couple of items tonight. I know next month we are going to be recognizing our schools of distinction as, you know, part of our recognition. But I just want to say, we're just delighted that we have seven schools this year. North Myanis, North Street, Riverside, Hamilton Avenue, Parkway, ISD, and Eastern, that were all given schools of distinction from the Connecticut State Department of Ed. So it's very exciting to have seven schools, and not only that, I think the thing that I was most pleased with is that all seven, some have one category or two, but all seven were, were given distinction for growth. And that really is the, you know, what's really important in our strategic plan. And that's the work that we have been doing and we're going to continue to do. So congratulations to those schools and the school communities. Last night, we had Battle of the Books. It was exciting this year because all 11 students actually participated, and 11 students, 11 schools participated. And I want to say a very special thanks to Kim Palladino, who stepped in to emcee last night at the very last minute. So thank you, Kim, and we hear you just did a fabulous job. Also, our PTA had said, please make sure that people know when the BET meetings are because, as the board is very aware, as we're going through the budget cycle, it does get confusing. We all go to a lot of meetings. We are presenting the FY25 budget. We are presenting the F Y twenty-five budget, operating and capital, to the B E T on next Tuesday evening. That is also the night where the public hearing is held for those people who want to make comments about capital or operating. And we will put the link and information in the note tomorrow. So if anyone's looking for that, you'll know where it is. Just a few weeks ago, Ms. Kowalski and I had the pleasure of attending the committee meeting for the Connecticut State Department of Ed on racial balance. And we had a conversation about what we have been doing, what our numbers are looking like as of, as of today. We get updated numbers actually in the spring from them. And we will be back in February or March, they said, in front of the full Connecticut State Department of Ed Board. So again, it's really just sharing what we are doing. And in general, they would like to see more. But it's a challenging conversation because there really aren't any great suggestions on how to resolve the issue as the way that the law is written. I also want to update just the community as a whole. I think the baseball community is very looped in, but they were moving forward on, you know, solving the baseball challenge since that field needed more remediation work at the high school. And the Havemire Field behind the Havemire building, that is going to be utilized for varsity. And the J C Field is going to be utilized for junior varsity. And there's a whole team of people from the athletic director, for Park and Reg, our facilities team, they're all coordinating. And right now, they have a list of everything that they need to do to make the field, especially the varsity field, the field that we want our kids to be proud to play on. You know, things like the perimeter fencing, you know, having some temporary solutions, not only for seating. But again, they also brought in the state baseball commissioner to help guide, to make sure everything was going to be right, right the way that it needs to be. So we're moving forward on that, which is just terrific. And I think that's it for me tonight. So thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Tony regarding the, so Mike?
Hi, Tony. Given the comments tonight from the pre-K families, are you in a position where you could remind us a little about the, the range? When we were thinking about the ratio, how it's, I know we had conversations last month of how it's, it's a little more of a range than straight 50/50. But I don't know if you could give some context to that.
Yeah, I mean, there's quite a bit of misinformation that's actually floating around. And I think part of it is, is the board knows. It was discussed at the committee meeting, it was discussed at the full board. And really what it was stating, if you go back and you look at the language, it doesn't say we're supposed to go to 50/50. Basically, what it says, and I had Mike Antonaccio actually pull it for me today so I could remind myself what we said in the language of what you approved. It really is that there's a management opportunity, which there always has been, to understand that, you know, we could bump to 17, but we could stay still at our, our numbers as they are right now. But it's just, it's really calling out that we do have flexibility because as a reminder, next year, we're also dealing with the legislative change for preschool. And so it's a little different going into next year than what we have seen in the past. And once we know how many students are actually going to repeat and stay in kindergarten versus how many of those that fall between, fall with, they don't turn five and af- before September 1st, that those children can still go on to kindergarten. There's a way and a pathway for that. Until we get all those numbers, we won't know where we are to start in the fall. But I just want to reiterate that we're adding a class. Literally, it's getting posted probably tomorrow or, you know, early next week for a pre-K that will be added mid-year for this very reason. And we work really hard to make sure that we stay within a good ratio for our teachers. We believe that that's important. We've also built into next year another mid-year section. Because what a lot of people don't understand is, at the beginning of the year, generally, you don't start with your ratio already at max at nine and six. Otherwise, we would have no room to add children throughout the year. And our three-year-olds cannot start in pre-K until they turn three. And as a matter of fact, I was just looking at the numbers today, not because of this discussion, but because we're adding this class. We know we have seven, I believe it's seven, children that are starting at the end of February, because that's when they turn three. And so we know we have the numbers to go and add this other section. So there's a lot of moving pieces to pre-K. And we will work to try to have something updated in our note tomorrow, and maybe that will help people understand a little bit. But again, we're really proud of the pre-K program that we have. And I think, you know, during the budget committee and also the full board, when you looked at, you know, what is happening in this region, we have more staff, we have a smaller class size, and we have better ratios than everybody in Fairfield County. And, you know, I, I think we need to be proud of that, but we also just, we're communicating that we, we have a little bit of flexibility depending on what's happening, because next year is definitely a challenging year for pre-K. So I hope that answers that.
Anyone else have questions? Sure, Laura.
So we, just to put a fine point on this pre-K issue, we voted on a reduction. And did we not? I mean, if we're reducing to meet a budgetary goal, we didn't really, in my opinion, vet a change. And unless we can communicate to parents what they're signing up for, because people do pay for this program, and I, I don't think we can say, you know, we're just gonna wing it. I mean, we have to give them a concrete ratio of what they can expect in the classroom, or why would they sign up? So I, I think, you know, right now, it's very squishy what I'm hearing, and I, I feel like we need a more concrete answer for the parents who've come out tonight because most of those three-year-olds were in a one-on-one, if they came from birth to three, were in a one-on-one education environment in the home. And now they're walking into an environment where there's an equal number of kids with needs potentially versus ones that have the need for an education. So I think we're, I, I don't really feel that we're, we have any kind of specificity right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, the ratio hasn't changed. The ratio is nine-six, it's 15. And we try to stay as close with that ratio as we can. But I can tell you right now, even, even last year or this year, if you get into, you know, April, and all of a sudden, we have children who are three that can start in April and May, we're not going to go add a whole nother section of pre-K to get from March through June. And I think, you know, what the board did, it's, it's calling out that flexibility. Now, if we get into the fall, because what we, what we eliminated was a whole additional extra section because we were afraid that we may need an extra section. But even as recent as today, I'm sorry, we were discussing that we don't know what numbers are gonna look like in kindergarten. I'm sorry.
Take your time, it's okay. We've all been there.
Yeah, maybe a note is good. Sorry, Tony.
Laura. Well, Tony's, okay, no problem. Are you sure you're okay? Because I was gonna provide some positive comments while you were coughing. Okay, I'm gonna provide some com- positive comments while you're coughing. We'll go back to that, but I just wanted to highlight for just a quick moment, and we can get back, and it's not to draw a distraction to the, the P K ratio, because I realize based upon the number of emails, that is clearly a concern with them amongst parents. So we should continue to talk about that. But I just wanted to say kudos to the seven schools that were schools of distinction. I think that that's amazing, to have seven out of 11. Was it 11, seven elementary schools? Yeah, seven out of 11 elementary schools, particularly in the growth category coming out of COVID. I think that that's just exceptional for our teachers. They're doing a wonderful job and exceptional for our students who are just doing a, an amazing job in, in their, their own academic achievement. So that's great. And I'm really excited about the Battle of the Books. I no longer have an elementary school child in the Battle of the Books, and I remember it in the past years and had so much fun watching those kids. So I'm so glad we're continuing on with that because it's a wonderful program. So for all those that participated, that's fantastic. I just also am channeling Joe Kelly here with the baseball community and saying, I think it's wonderful that we're trying to make all the accommodations that we can for our baseball players with the current state of the fields at the high school. And for whatever we can do, I think that that's fabulous because I know we have a strong baseball program, and there is no reason to shortchange those kids in, in giving them the fields that they need. So thank you, Tony, for making that happen. Now, if you're ready, we can go back to our pre-K.
Okay, let me try one more time. Where was I? I'm sorry.
You were talking about the fact that, you know, it gives us some flexibility in regards to, yeah, at the end of the year, and when we get back to the beginning of the year and how our numbers look.
Yeah, so if, because we don't know until we actually get back to the beginning of the year. And the other thing is, there's a huge advocacy push for pre-K in that the legislature could legislate something this spring that completely changes, again, what we look like in September. And so we had built in an extra section. That's what the board actually took out. And we still have another section, which we've done the last two years, planned for next January mid-year, because we expect growth. But I think what's happening in September is, isn't unknown. And there's not an intent to go and all of a sudden look like, you know, a different district that has 18 students, or that's not our goal. And if we all of a sudden see really unusual numbers, we'll do what we've done the last two years in, with our other special education programs. If we have to go for an interim, we can do that, because it would be validated again by the numbers. But it is a difficult year going into pre-K in September, not knowing how many kids are going to stay back.
Thanks, Tony. Any other questions? Okay. With that, I will move on to the reports of officers, committees, and liaisons. Is there any reports from Ms. Doe?
Thank you. Just from the Greenwich Alliance. Actually, Julie would like me to let the Board of Ed know that she, sorry that she's not here tonight, but she's actually at the Y W C A Coretta Scott and M L K Annual Program. So here are the updates. We did have a meeting earlier this week. Avid Success Scholarship Awards completed the 155,000 annual budget to scholarships this week and awarded 50 avid college students, sophomore through senior years, 75,000. They are all excelling academically and involved in their school communities, all while working at least one job. The Alliance is looking for interesting community members to join their bench of experts. Members of the bench would make themselves available to students who are looking for more information about potential careers or the academic route they could take to get into this specific field. They're also looking for volunteers knowledgeable about the processes, processes to apply to graduate school. So if anybody wants to help with that, let me know, and I'll put you in touch with the Greenwich Alliance. As I've said in the past, trivia challenge, March 1st, they are back in person. It's actually gonna be apparently finally decided at Tammerack Club. I remember there were some complaints about the distance. I was a little bit insulted because I find that close to me. But otherwise, I think it's a great place, and the tickets will be on sale soon. And last but not least, reaching out grants application is posted on the Alliance website. Please email Julie with any questions. Grants are due March 24th. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen.
You'll have to compete, try to recruit some people right now, but we'll see. I'm gonna give you a test.
All right, anyone else? Mr. or Doc, Dr. Mercantian?
Well, the, I got married at Tammerack, so, so we're, we're happy to join the team. So the old Greenwich, I've got two reports. The old Greenwich Building Committee continues to meet on a bi-weekly cadence. Tomorrow is a big day, as we're expecting design and development drawings to be completed and given to our, the building committee. So we'll be, they'll be looking at that next week. As I think I mentioned last time, there were a lot of, there was a lot of different inspections done over the break and whatnot that went into the design development. The board should be aware that we might have some decisions this spring. There are, we discovered there are some small but important areas of the roof not covered by the ed specs that are leaking. So when we're going to, the, the professionals are putting together a number of different options for us to take a look at, but it's when the final plans come back to us. But there are, these are hallways and things like that. This isn't massive, massive parts of the roof or things. But they're adjacent to ed spec areas, so it's things that we're gonna have to look at when we consider the final, final design of the project.
Thank you. You said you had a second one?
Sophie and I met yesterday with the Research Ed Planning Committee, which is continuing to repa- pace April 6th. At Greenwich High School is going to be really an exciting day. You might have seen the, the news in local media this week announcing our keynote speaker. And a lot of really exciting things happening. So Dr. Carl Hendrick is author of two recent books, How Teaching Happens and How Learning Happens. He is a professor from Amsterdam. I won't try to pronounce the name, but he's coming from, all the way from, from the Netherlands. He's British, but he's coming from the Netherlands to, as our keynote speaker. We've got folks coming from, international experts from the U K and Belgium and across the United States. The over 30 education experts are, are signed up. And right now, we've been working with Lill and the G E A to collect proposals from our wonderful faculty and staff to showcase the great stuff here as well. The Alliance, we met with the Alliance last week, and the Alliance is working on sponsoring some teachers to attend the event. The cost is only $65, the, but we're happy to, the Alliance is gonna help that as well for, for some folks if they're looking for that. And Dr. Jones this week sent out a, a note to neighboring districts and neighboring private schools, both in Fairfield and Westchester, advertising the event. So really, this is really something really special that's really showcasing us as a center of connecting research to practice. So it's really an exciting thing coming up April 6th.
Great. Anyone else? Ms. Costin.
I am super excited to spend my anniversary at Research Ed. I wanted to-
To go to Tammerack afterwards.
I wanted to let you know that the Central Middle School Building Committee hosted a community engagement forum. I'm sure all of you were online watching, because none of you were here with me for them, but it will be posted online so the community can see all the latest renderings and the presentation from the professionals. And that's all I got for you at the moment.
Did you get a good turnout? Besides us?
Yeah, I believe we did. But I couldn't technically see who was online, because I was paying attention.
Ms. Hersh.
Yeah, there were a lot of meetings last night, so I know, I would say probably the majority of us were dividing and conquering. I wanted to update you. C I C met this week, had a wonderful presentation where we learned a little bit more about Greenwich Public Schools Communities, Community Connections Program, and as well as how some of the changes mandated by the state are going to impact in a positive way our program, which was very exciting. That presentation will probably be posted shortly on the C I C website through our Greenwich Public Schools website as well, which is where you can find all their past presentations. They also are going to be teaming with C P A C for three different parent seminars, the first of which will be coming up on January 24th at 6:30 P M, which will be taking place in the High School Media Center called Understanding Challenging Behavior, sort of how to work with your students with challenging behaviors. More information on that I am sure is also on that website for those who want to sign up. And please do sign up in advance. We'll share that information. I'm sure Dr. Jones will send that out in the weekly. Work is also moving ahead on the 2E manual, finally. So we'll have a little bit more update, some more updates on that coming forward. On a separate note, both textbook committees that I'm sitting on for social studies and higher level math have met with numerous publishers and have come to a conclusion. They will be presenting their selections, their committee selections to the board at the February 22nd meeting, which should be interesting and exciting. The GHS entryway is moving ahead, that committee. We are on time and hopefully at or under budget. They had a lot of success with the brick campaign, which will be not just funding the fantastic bricks in front, but as well as additional greenery being requested by the town for the entryway at the high school. And there may be some other opportunities coming forward to help support the high school in that area. So I think that's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay. I just had two updates. One, thank you for everyone who, everyone submitted their preferences for new committees going forward. I just wanted to let the rest of the members of the board know. I have all that information and Karen and I are sitting down tomorrow and we are going to sketch it all out together and then let everyone know. So that, that'll be a process that'll be finished tomorrow. The second piece that I wanted to comment on was also, I did go to Hartford with respect to the racial imbalance piece. And it's getting interesting, to say the least. And I think there'll be some strong pushback from the state in what we're doing. And I will be working, you know, I welcome everyone's comments on racial imbalance in general and, and our thoughts going forward. I do think that whatever we as the board and administration put forward to the state in February should be presented, or in March should be presented to the board and we should have a discussion to understand what we're doing. I think one of the key elements that was focused on is not only just the racial imbalance, but also the growth and development in the two schools at issue, which are New Lab and Hamilton Avenue that are currently out of balance. And that's, I think, one of the areas that we'll need to show to the state is our growth, academic growth in both those schools and the specific programs for the students in those schools that are different from around the community. But again, I'm going to work with Dr. Jones and I think that, and our administration. But I do think we need to have transparency within the board and the community about what's being put forward in regards to that. Because the state is starting to move forward and, and pushing in that direction of just redistricting is their common thread. And I know that they've been pushing in Fairfield, so it's one of the issues that we need to be paying attention to as well. And with that, I'll also be reaching out to Fairfield to find out what they're doing and how they're combating this issue from a racial imbalance standpoint. All right, so let's move on to our discussion items. The first item up, Dr. Jones, sorry, we're back to you, but with the Western Middle School Soil Update.
So for Western soil, very, very short. We're working hard and trucks are now going in and off the properties every day and getting the soil removed. So we're moving full steam ahead. We did discuss today very briefly that in the, early in the spring, we'll actually have the team come and update the board. But right now, it's just a bunch of soil being moved off, but it's very exciting. That's it.
Fabulous. It's, oh, yep, hold on, one guy, Karen, Ms. Hirsch has a question.
I know that, of course, this is the one year we're finally having some snow. And I know that might have some impact on the, the hard soil that we're removing and bringing stuff in. But do we have an idea on when, you know, we might be able to actually put some students on that field? Hopefully this spring, maybe, before end of school?
Definitely not going to be this spring. And I keep saying next fall because, you know, I, I don't, you just don't ever know what you don't know. It's a long project. There's, you know, we've got to rebuild the entire field after we get all the soil out. But I know the team is going to go as aggressive as they can. And right now, I mean, the question I asked today is, you know, the ground being frozen, is that impacting the soil removal at all? And Mr. Watson said that, no, you know, it's not because they, they make the big piles of soil and then they just keep moving the piles. And so they're still working. But I know the team is going to be aggressive to get us on as quickly as they can.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right. Moving on, we are the calendar update, April 2nd primary update. Dr. Jones, back to you.
Right, so this is just drawing attention tonight that this is an issue for us in that the registrar of voters let me know that the date in Connecticut has been set for April 2nd primary. And we may not be in school that day given, but it's, we're going to wait and see who actually lands on the ballot. Originally, the date was supposed to be tomorrow when the ballots for Connecticut would come out. We would know if it's going to be a really contentious election, high voter turnout, or is it going to be pretty small at the local level? And I will take guidance from our registrar voters on that. If it's a high voter turnout, then you have lots of parking. There's just a lot of other issues, safety. Then we would be out of school. If it's a, we expect a very low voter turnout, we could possibly still have school. And I will have this again on our, probably our next agenda. Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is this spring, right? So this is the presidential primary?
Yes. And, and, yeah, and there may be another primary, I think, state, state on there as well that shows up. But that's, I'm not really sure. I just take my guidance from them. And they let me know that it's definitely April 2nd.
Pardon me, the, how many snow days do we have? Would that be a, could that help with this? Right, we have five snow days, right?
We build in five, yeah. So if-
So this wouldn't, so a day off would, would count as one of our snow days probably?
If we don't use our snow days, then yeah, it could, we have five built in. So we'd still have to add that, well, it's already built in at the end as a snow day. So you could use one of those certainly. Yeah. We have four left.
Is it supposed to snow tonight or tomorrow night?
It actually, coming in, in the morning, they, they've kind of changed the timeline a little bit. I, I'm really hopeful. I'm not anticipating it's going to impact us more than anything tomorrow. If, if the snow totals or something starts to change, it would probably be an early release tomorrow afternoon. Not a delay of school or a delay in the morning. But again, you never know until you wake up at 4:00, 4:30 and see who got it right and who got it wrong and see what actually happens tonight.
Sounds good. And well, I have a question on that. If it's a short day tomorrow, does that impact midterms at the high school tomorrow?
If it was an early release, it would, it would only impact if students needed extra time, you know, tomorrow afternoon, or they were supposed to, they were counting on the afternoon, which the high school would have to work, you know, with those students. But again, I'm really hopeful that the, the, you know, the meteorologist is correct this afternoon. We, the superintendent's also subscribed to meteorology service and we have discussions about the weather. And he's not anticipating it's going to have huge impacts.
All right, sounds good. Next item, Blaze, you're up, budget transfers.
Hello, thank you Chair Kowalski. Hi, everybody. I'm coming to you virtually. The, just informational transfers only per board policy, nothing too much to talk about. They're part of our, Kimberly Castoro is doing a lot of great work where she's just going through all the accounts and helping departments maintain their budgets. No negatives in any accounts or anything, so she just was working with them. There's some contractual payments that are being moved into the right account to pay things out of the right account here. And then same thing with the installing the whiteboards, a project for an outside vendor to pay for it out of the right account. Informational only, they're, they're staying within the major object code, but I'll take any questions if anybody has them.
With respect to the whiteboards, are those the whiteboards at the high school that are getting installed in some of the classrooms?
For the smart boards, yeah.
Yeah, the smart boards.
Yep, yeah, I misspoke. I said whiteboards, but they're the smart boards. I believe they're the ones at GHS.
Got it. Well, I'm happy to, I'm, I'm happy to say that I have received more than one. And I'll say multiple thank yous in that regards from several teachers on those smart boards being added to the high school. I think it's been a, a long overdue added benefit to several classrooms, so I'm glad we're doing that.
Excellent. That's awesome. Mike Ting's here, so it's a great shout out for his team. And, you know, also the work that they do with Dan and the maintenance team.
Great. Are there any questions on the board? All right. Good job, Blaze. Don't go nowhere.
Not going too far.
All right, good. The next step is the monthly finance, financial report.
Excellent. Yeah, so just really briefly, we're coming up on, you know, December 31st. So we're halfway through the fiscal year. You know, fortunately in December, the, the main story here would be that the, the town, you know, funded the operating fund, special education interim request that was as a result of the legal changes as well as the increase in services. That was really critical and that's really going to help the Board of Ed budget. In addition, we're, you know, really watching the weather will highly impact those utility costs. You know, last year we were really lucky where we ended up having a warm, a fairly warm winter and a fairly cool spring. The daily, you know, the main two budget drivers, we're, we're right on track right now. And Kim and, and Patrick have been doing a great job with all the administrators throughout the whole school district. And a huge shout out to all the work that all the principals have been doing and Mark's team. Because we're having these monthly budget meetings, everybody's checking their accounts, watching their, their reports. We'll hopefully be able to avoid, the goal here of all this work is to avoid a freeze, a district-wide freeze as well as the interim. And, and that was one of the reasons we partnered with the BET and, and RTM on that. Interim funding request was so that we could avoid a district freeze and it's very disruptive. The, the main two budget pressures remain special education, you know, for all the reasons we've already talked about, as well as the daily substitutes. We're seeing a really high utilization rate. We also increased, you know, which was, which was critical, increased the incentive. You know, the ARP incentive is, is still there. And that's about a 40 to 50% increase in the cost of subs. We addressed that in fiscal year 25, but it's still placing trip, you know, a lot of pressure on 24. Dan for Capital is really ramping up. We're working a lot. This is our planning time. Getting ready, writing all the bids right now with Eugene and getting ready to go out for bid for everything. So he's got his team working closely with Eugene and Karen and purchasing to go out to bid on a bunch of projects over the next two months. And you'll see a lot of funds start to get encumbered again as those contracts come back. Working really closely with the grants and entitlement, you know, all the grant managers to make sure that we're spending. Kim Castoro found out from the state today that there will be an extension on the liquidation period for all federal grants. So they still have to be encumbered. But the, that was great news on the liquidation period because sometimes we can have a long liquidation period. Or we've seen with some of the supply chain disruptions, things take longer to come in. So we don't get to actually pay for them. So that was a great news from the state government this morning. And that is it. I'll take any questions.
Any questions? I had one question. And regarding the substitutions, are we seeing still an increase in the need for substitutions across the board? Are we tracking this? Can we, are, are there any trends that we're seeing coming out of the high substitution rate?
Yeah, we can, Karen, I'll, I'll talk to Tony. We're, we're really watching the use right now. And we're trying to start map it out by, by week, by day too, to see, you know, Dr. Jones does a really good job. She gets a report and Patrick's been very good about making this an actionable report so that we can try to track any days and look for any patterns, you know, are certain days higher than other days? Are we running high on Fridays or something like that? But there's two things. I mean, the, the rate of the subs, you know, was increased for the incentive. And it still doesn't mean, because our base rate would just be not competitive with any of the surrounding districts. And the usage, we're, we're talking about it a lot. I'll share a report through Dr. Jones with you, Karen, of what we're doing this year with our reporting to track day subs. The Budget Committee had us doing some analysis to break up use by day by week. And I'll share that with the full board.
Okay. No, that would be helpful because I know we were experiencing a bit of an issue with that previously. So I just want to make, I just want to understand how that's impacting our, our budget and what we can do to avoid those increases. Because sub increases are payments or expenses that can be avoided. Mike?
No, so Cody's not here, but yeah, you should know, Karen, there, there was an existing report that Blaze and his team did that's really, really helpful that the Budget Committee has been looking at. So you can, you'll see it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Yep, I'll share that one. Yep.
All right. Anyone else? Cool. I think we're going to make record time. But just wait. Okay, let's move on to agenda planning discussion. Let's pull this bad boy out and I have a few. All right, so Ms. Hirsch, you have a few. Let's go for it. Oh, Tony, do you have to say anything first?
I might just mention, I did let the board know in my note last week and be sure and look closely because, you know, I keep notes on what the board wants to add from the very beginning of the year, which was when we were doing not only the strategic plan work, but also setting the board goals, setting my goals and some things that are, we had to figure out where they, where we could fit them in. You'll get a, a report on Windrose, which is our alternative ed at the bank building. That Community Connections report has been added, which is our 18 to 22-year-old. And apparently they did a great job for CAC last night and really giving an overview of the program. So that's what we want the full board and the community to hear. In the Wellness Center, we have social studies materials. And we also have a Suzuki program update.
Hey. All right, Karen. So I was just going to make note that we had two reports that were supposed to be on tonight. One was for K-12 ELA, but I don't see that added anywhere, so we'll have to just look there. And then new courses, the first read, it was supposed to be tonight, but it's been moved off. It's still listed on the 22nd as first read, which, it's listed on the 22nd as action, which should be a first read.
So I think Tony can talk to, I think there were no new courses. Is that correct, Tony?
Sorry, yes, that's correct.
Okay, then strike that. And then the two other questions I had were, one is because we did, CAC had the presentation from about Community Connections last night. I know that they're, you know, well-prepared. I didn't know, since our agenda on the, the 22nd looks pretty heavy. And on the 8th, it's, it's, the Community Connections presentation might fit really nicely with the subject matter of our retreat. I didn't know if we might want to consider, or if, you know, asking the administration if it's possible to consider moving it there. And then the only other thing was, we had talked about in September and October, which we pulled off, rental rates. We, through our budget, we already voted to increase tuition, but we haven't looked at rental rates. So I'm hoping to see that we can add that back on because the sooner the better.
So I'll do, you want me to speak to the CAC, the Community Connections on February 8th? That's a very heavy agenda because we have the two closed sessions. We, that's when we do any, you know, pending legal update, which last year was the first year we did that and the board requested that we do it again. But then the special education closed executive session, all, we always spend at least an hour. And I would imagine having two new board members, they may have a lot of questions. But those are both, so the first two hours of the retreat. And then you have the curriculum report, which will be, you know, that's not going to be short. You always ask a lot of questions of them. of them. And you also have um the special education uh report that night. So it's actually a pretty long meeting, even though it's a retreat. And then Blaze, you might chime in on the rental rates, what you're thinking.
All right. So look, I, my suggestion would then be, look, I don't want to push it off as far as March 21st, but that meeting is fairly light. Yes, I was going to say unencumbered, but same thing. Um, so my suggestion would be to put the Community Connections report from CAC on for the 21st. Yeah, and it would tie in with the Windrose report we could do on the same day. And then Tony, could you just talk to the, on the K through 12 ELA that came off? Is that, that report needs to be, um, first of all, yeah, what is that and and when should be, and when would be your suggestion to put it back on the calendar?
Yeah, and I might ask, um, Mark's on here too, just as a reminder. Um, I know we were pulling it off initially, um, partially because uh Kim, right now, has been so deep into uh the waiver. It's taking a tremendous amount of time um in what she's been putting together. And then, of course, now we're preparing for additional meetings. Um, and I think that the ELA update is done as part of the actual um achievement report and and the update that you get every fall. So you've already, there is nothing new to really share. And Mark, please add if you have anything else to say to that.
Yeah, that's correct. I would, I would say the best course of action at this point is to wait and see how we navigate through the channels of the state regarding our waiver. And then we can come back to the board and provide a comprehensive update of what our next steps would be. Uh, that's probably, um, you know, our, the most important thing that we need to do in terms of providing an update in the world of ELA.
Mark, on that point, when will we, what, what can you give some clarity on the timeline of this, of where the waiver stands and what we can expect in the months going forward on that?
Well, there was an interesting article in the Greenwich Times today that I thought Dr. Jones did a really nice job outlining our, our concerns and our complaints with the waiver process in general. Uh, we are scheduled to have a meeting in the upcoming weeks. However, we have FOI'd certain documents that we, that, that we feel are critical to review prior to our defense. And the state has yet to furnish those documents to us. Dr. Jones, have you received an update in terms of when they might uh send us that information for review?
No, they're just, they, I did reach out to them again this week and um they're in the queue, they say. So I think they're looking to see what they have that is responsive to our request.
Okay. Um, then with respect to the rental rates, why don't we also add that to the March 21st, Karen? Thoughts?
I, I figure when you guys get to, we, I just wanted to put it out there. We can take a look later.
Yeah, okay. I, let's not put it on any firm component, but let's just make sure that it gets dealt with. So I've got that on for that point in time. Mike, I wanted to talk to you about um when you think you might want to come back to the board on the old Greenwich, um, whether it's adding in the roof or even coming back on the design and development drawings that you have.
Yeah, uh, it's, I, it's-
It's probably March, but we'll know better next week. So.
That's all right, because March could use some filling up.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything to add? Okay, good. Let's go.
Um, so May 30th, the um, we um have attempted this a couple of different ways and this is more, this is a little bit semantics, but um if we're going to um talk about, which we should, right, the board goals, um, I, I don't know if the um, we want to call that, that third one. So ostensibly on May 30th, we're going to review our current board goals and give, you know, do some self-evaluation as far as how we did, how we did. And then it, it's not really 24, 25 BOE goals first read. It's more uh around, um, that would be us drafting the, the board goals, right? Like, like a drafting conversation, right? They um, because we're not going to come, my, my, my assumption is we're not going to come here with a document that we would read as much as we would, we would, we would, we were drafted, right? So, so I don't know. So like I said, it's a little bit semantics, but it's like 24, 25 BOE um drafting, you know, board goals drafting or something like that, right? It's not really a first read, like it would be a policy. Um, and then whole, ostensibly, we would then vote for it also on the June 17th. Does that make sense?
You mean June 13th?
June 13th.
Um-
St. Anthony Day.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Uh, I think we can use, depending on how busy May 30th is, but I think that makes sense. I agree with you, it should be drafting and then we can go forward and tentatively put it on the calendar for a vote on our goals. All right. Um, the, all right, anything else? Okay. Um, before we adjourn, I just had one comment to say, uh, January 25th at 10:00 AM, and I forgot to mention this in the liaison comments, although I did um send out an email, but the January 25th, I believe at 10:30 AM is the Windrose graduation, if you can attend. Uh, there are, I think, just a, a small handful of students. It's a fairly uh intimate setting, uh, if you can make it. Uh, so I just throw that out there. All right. Um, does anybody have a motion to make? Ms. Costin?
I would like to make, to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, point of order, yes.
I, I am wondering if, given there's a new board makeup, if the um, somebody, a, a newer member of the board should, should have this traditional role.
Uh, there are two. Who would you like to bestow the honor on?
I nominate Sophie.
Um, yeah, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I think we have to withdraw the motion first.
I withdraw my motion. And suggest, or actually I'll amend my motion, that I suggest Sophie make it.
I second that motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second. All in favor? Seven oh. All right. We're record time.